Thank you, everyone, for waiting with us.
And we're all set.
Great. Hello, everybody, and welcome. We're going to get started in just a second. And in the meantime, I want to let folks know that we have closed captioning. If you click on the icon in the lower left-hand, or I'm sorry, the bottom of the zoom window. Additionally, there is going to be a link in the chat box if you want to open a separate window to follow along with closed captioning. And next, we invite you to type in your name, affiliation, and pronouns in the chat box. And free field to tell us what year was it when you first voted?
Type in what we post started?
Okay, so everyone should be muted. So let's go ahead and mute everybody. And all the guests attendees can type in your name, your affiliation, your pronouns in the chat box. And feel free to tell us what year was it when you first voted? So thank you, everyone, for joining us today for the Candidates Forum on Houselessness and Housing. We are proud to co-sponsor this event with St. Mary's Center and Black Cultural Zone. East Bay Housing Organizations, or EPO, is a member-driven organization working to preserve, protect, and create affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities in the East Bay by educating, organizing, and building coalitions. As a 501(c)(3), we do not endorse candidates, but we are honored to co-host this Candidates Forum as an educational opportunity for our members and communities. I am EPO's lead organizer, Dolores Tahada, and our first panel will begin shortly. For this event, we have developed questions using input from our co-sponsors, community, and membership to ask the candidates where they stand on important housing and houselessness issues. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves and 90 seconds to respond to the question. Attendees can use the chat box to discuss, but we ask that conversation remain cordial. If you, if we have time, we may ask one or two questions in the chat box, so feel free to use a chat box for that purpose as well. I want to shout out EPO's team that has collaborated to execute today's webinar, Membership and Operations Director Kiki Poe, Communications Manager Grover Weeman-Brown, and Census and Campaign Organizer Damian Scott. Last, this webinar is a first in a series of events centered on voter education that we are doing in September. Tomorrow morning, we are hosting a webinar on Alameda County's Measure Z. And next week, on September 24th, we are hosting the Second Candidates Forum that will cover District 5 and 7 and the at-large seat. We invite you to join us for that as well. You can find more information on all these events on our website, eppo.org, and a link is being placed in the chat box now for you. Today, we have two panels. The first one will be the Candidates for District 1, and then later in the evening, we have Candidates from District 3. Now, we will begin with the panel for District 1. Our moderator for this panel is Noni Session, the Director of East Bay Permanent Real Estate Cooperative. Now, take it away, Noni.
Thank you so much, Dolores. And thank you all for being here tonight at Elbow's Candidate Forum. We really appreciate your time and your regard for the important work that EPO does in the city. We will start from, on my screen, from left to right with introductions. And then we'll move into the questions round. So first, we have Try and Go. And can you let us know where you're coming from?
Thank you so much, Noni. Excellent pronunciation, by the way. My name is Try and Go. I'm running for Oakland City Council in District 1. I'm committed to creating an Oakland of love and belonging through a government that includes every single voice. I'm focused on solving homelessness, preserving Oakland's diversity by creating affordable housing, and reimagining public safety in a way that works for every resident. And how we're going to do this and what differentiates me from the other candidates, and actually many candidates in in running for office in Oakland, is I am committed to increasing participation in local government. I'm accepting a maximum of $35 per person, so there is no question about where my values and my thoughts and my principles align. I'm aligned with the people. I want to create an online voting system that enables all residents to participate in local government so that we broaden participation, broadening grassroots support so that we actually take effective actions and hold government accountable. How much time do I have, Noni?
You have 55 seconds left.
I would like to request that everyone who supports a government that represents everyone, take a look at my website, votry.com, and please consider making a donation so that we qualify for public campaign financing, the deadline of which is tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Try. We appreciate it. Next, we'll hear an introduction from Councilmember Dan Cal.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Noni, and thank you, Gloria, and everybody at EPO for all your great work over the years. It's been a pleasure working, working with you on many, on many, many things. In fact, back in 2006, one of my introductions to EPO was when I came to testify on an inclusionary housing ordinance that unfortunately failed in 2006. But I was out there supporting it, and that was really my biggest introduction to EPO, and I've been a supporter, a key supporter ever since. I've worked hard over the past seven and a half years to solve problems, big and small, throughout the district, throughout the city. For my entire adult life, I've been a public interest advocate, a social justice advocate, community activist. Really, that's who I am. And when I became, when I became a council member, I didn't stop being an activist. I didn't stop being a public interest advocate. I continued that, and that was my philosophy, my MO, my way of doing things. I'm proud of my record. I'm proud of my record as a leader in securing more funding for affordable housing. The Boomerang Fund's a number in 2013, and by now, that's brought in close to $20 million in funding for Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and there'll be more coming each year. I'm very proud of the work I've done to protect tenants from displacement and being the author or joint author of many proposals over the past several years. Really, I've become a, a reputation is as a strong leader on tenant protections and tenant rights for Oakland, and I will continue to be a strong advocate for tenants to reduce displacement. Been also very engaged in climate justice, public safety, police accountability, pedestrian safety, libraries, and so on and so forth. So I'm very proud of the work I've done, and I want to continue to work when it comes to housing. I want to continue to work on the key issues facing us, whether it's getting more affordable housing built in District 1. There are two projects over
15 seconds.
There are two projects over the MLK and West MacArthur. The dormitory we purchased, we're purchasing, the city's purchasing from the College League Arts. I helped push that through. And so as much as we could do to get more affordable housing built, preserve what we do have and protect tenants from displacement throughout the, throughout every year, every day. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And finally, we have Stephanie Dominguez Walton.
So much. It's a pleasure to see all of you and to meet you and to see some of you again. My name is Steph Dominguez Walton, candidate for Oakland City Council in District 1, where I've lived for the past 15 and a half years and where I am raising my family. My priorities are housing and homelessness and solving those crises, equity and education, and police reform and public safety. My policy priorities reflect my values and my experiences. My family grew up with very little money. My father worked as a gas station attendant when I was born. He worked hard, and he ended up getting into Stanford University. We lived in subsidized student housing, and my mother worked as a secretary earning just enough to put my dad through and to to keep us whole as a family. After my dad graduated, my parents borrowed $2,000 from our Uncle Jimmy, and they were able to buy a house in a neighborhood where the public schools were good. And a good education is what put me on the right path. I still was confronted with racism all throughout my upbringing. It's, you know, it's tough to talk about in 2020 that we're still, we're still facing these same issues, but it's a reality. In fact, my dad, who was Mexican and Native American, was often pulled over by the police for no good reason. I remember asking as a little girl, Dad, why are we getting pulled over again? And, you know, coming up, my brother and I were often just, we had racial epithets slinged at us starting in elementary school. It's hard, and it really, it takes a toll on a person. But I persevered, and I succeeded. I succeeded in my professional career as a woman of color in a male-dominated radio
15 seconds.
15 seconds. I believe housing is a right. I support rent control and Prop 21. I believe we should, we should prioritize affordable housing, and I believe we should revise our zoning codes to account for the racist past. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, now, Councilmember Cal, you have the great honor of receiving the first question. And the question is, now more than ever, everyone needs a place to call home. Do you believe that housing is a human right? And policy-wise, what does that look like in Oakland? You're on mute.
There you go. Trying to push mute. I had to push it forward. Okay, yes, I do believe housing is a human right, and I, there was some effort at the state level to kind of codify that in some broadly-defined statute that I had supported, but really, you know, when the rubber meets the, where the rubber meets the road, it's money. It's funding. We could all say we want more housing, but if you don't have the money to actually create it or preserve it or, or transition it, you're not going to be able to solve all the problem, all the challenges you want to solve. So yes, I do believe we need to focus more of our funds, get more federal and state funds. I've been working on that. I've been working, I don't work just at the city level. If I know that working countywide, regional, or in the state level is going to help Oakland, then that's what I've done, and it will continue to do. And I understand how things work at the state level and all the players there. So we have to get more funding. I'm happy that we're able to purchase the the dormitory, but there's much more we need to do. That's going to serve close to 100 total seniors and homeless families, and that's a great thing, but there's much more we need to do. So while we, while we made progress in terms of helping hundreds of people get off the street into housing of one sort or another, the challenge is we have thousands, not hundreds, so the scale is not what it needs to be, and that's going to require more
15 seconds.
That's going to require more funding, and I'm committed to setting aside more funding, finding more funding, whether it's dedicated funding or general fund funding. We have to do that to get more housing constructed. And I want to have certain requirements on developers, for-profit developers, to make sure they have a greater contribution to solving this problem. But it's a big challenge, whether it's the prevention, which I focused on a lot, and will continue to prioritize as a cost-effective solution. Crisis management on the short term and long-term housing, all of those things must be a priority, and I will continue to make that a priority the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Stephanie Dominguez Walton, same question to you. Do you believe housing is a human right? And policy-wise, what does that look like in Oakland?
I do believe housing is a human right. Am I on mute? Oh, I got to unmute myself.
No, you're good. We can hear you.
I'm good. Okay, great. I do believe housing is a human right, and I'm, you know, living in this district for 15 and a half years. I've seen dramatic change where housing and our unhoused population has grown 50% in the last two years. Poor planning has gotten us to this place. We don't have enough housing for folks. People who want to, who work in Oakland should be able to live in Oakland. We're watching people of color being pushed out and down, and that's just, that has been the pattern. The, the fees that, the impact fees that we collect at the city level, I think, should be higher. The fees that have been collected have yielded or could build at the average rate of 700,000 per door or per unit. About 73 units. That's not enough. We have 5,000 unhoused residents living on the streets. I think we need to talk about inclusionary zoning and multifamily units, especially near transit. Convenience should be for people at all income levels. I think tenant protections are critically important. And
15 seconds.
15 seconds. I think we need to work outside of the city, and I have, you know, plans to, when elected, work with Assemblymember Buffy Wicks to get stuff done at the state level to bring more housing to Oakland as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much. Same question to our third panelist, Try and Go. Do you believe housing is a human right? And policy-wise, what does that look like in Oakland?
Everyone in Oakland says that housing is a human right. And despite everyone saying that, especially our politicians, we've taken ineffective actions in this area. Homelessness has increased 50% in the past two years. We need change, and the change I'm bringing is the realization that we aren't taking effective actions because our houseless residents and the voices of the people who want to support them are not accurately being represented in government. And that's why I have my $35 limit, and that's why I'm committed to expanding engagement so that we apply political pressure to government to take action. Homelessness, I have a comprehensive plan for it. It's called Camp Assist. On this, I'm very proud to announce that I have the endorsement of Auntie Frances, who is an ex-Black Panther working in Driver Plaza. I have enormous respect for her. We have a four-step program, support those living in the encampments with infrastructure and sanitation. We want to interview every single houseless resident to meet them where they are. We want to provide transition options to more permanent housing. Once they have semi-permanent housing, we want to focus private and nonprofit
15 seconds.
organizations. So support those living in the encampments. And then housing, we need to make sure that the distribution of housing matches the distribution of income in Oakland, and it doesn't. And that's, we need to build more cost-effectively. I support ADU developments and support what you're doing with EB-Prex so that those who have money can support those who don't.
Thank you so much, Try. I appreciate it. The next question goes to you, Stephanie, if I may call you by your first name.
Please do.
Okay. So yes, we all agree that we need low-income housing. But for extremely low-income individuals, even affordable housing financed by the city with tax credits and state funds remains too expensive. What would you do to provide housing that's affordable to those with little or no income?
Right. This is a great question because it is a very pressing issue, as you know. Currently, you know, we don't have an abundance of money during this pandemic and during this economic downturn. However, we do have 5,000 unhoused residents who were living through last week outside without masks or without any, you know, shelter and windows to close. I reached out to someone at the village and said, what would it take to get people off the streets into some of these vacant hotels on a longer-term basis, and then eventually with an exit plan that is permanent housing? And I was, it was a very enlightening conversation because it does, it does take money. But we have to start thinking outside of the box. And the reason I reached out to me to be at the village was to find out how much would it take to create permanent housing for people who are coming off the streets, who need the wraparound services to, to get well from, from living on, from life on the street to, to drug rehab services, to mental health services, to 24-hour crisis management, if, you know, because that
15 seconds.
thing. I think we have to go outside of Oakland, and we have to start getting creative. And what I'm doing as a private citizen is trying to source money to bring into Oakland to make that stuff happen right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The same question goes to you, Tree, if I try, if I may. What would you do to make affordable housing affordable to those with little or no income?
We need to make it even more affordable, number one. So we need to lower the cost. On the, the most basic kind of housing is a tent on an empty plot of land. And there is plenty of empty plots of land even all throughout District 1. People are asking, why do we have folks that are being unsupported and when we have empty plots of land? I have business owners, you know, who they're, they're saying, across the street, please use this and support them. So at the very minimum, we can give them an empty plot of land and support them on that. I think that's very affordable. We can also use systems like the one that EB-Prex set up so that we funnel money from the community to support those who don't have income, lowering the costs. And then also, we can increase the income of those individuals by providing universal basic income, something that I support. And this is something that needs to be coordinated at the state and federal level. But as our economy moves towards automation and with the pandemic, I think we need to look into this because it, we need to
15 seconds.
If housing is a right, we need to do all we can to set up a safety net under all individuals to accomplish that.
Thank you. I appreciate your response. And finally, Dan, if I may refer to you as such. Even with affordable housing financed by city and tax credits, what would you do? What will you do to provide housing that's affordable to those with little or no income?
Thank you for that question. Yes, in terms of different levels of affordability, it really only goes down to 30, sometimes 20 of AMI, which is still more than $0. You're still going to pay something if you want to fall in that category and have a lease and so on, even with services. So you're right. For some people who are homeless, they could do that. For many others, you're absolutely right. They, that even that would not be available for them. We need to bring in, I believe we need to bring in and maybe reshape part of the responsibilities of the Oakland Housing Authority. They have access. They have certain responsibilities under federal law, but they have, there should be a way to use them better than we are today to get them to help with the homeless challenges we're facing. They do a lot of good work, no question about it, but, and what they do is fundamental, but I like to bring them into the conversation, into the solution. I think that's going to help. Obviously, funding is a challenge. I do support the tiny house, sometimes called tiny homes, a tiny house village that Spirit, the Spirit Group had put forward in Oakland. That's actually in progress now. I think we could be expand upon that. I'm not saying that's going to solve all the problem. We are having some success in helping dozens, even hundreds of people get off the street into long-term or transitional, transitional and long-term housing. But the problem is we need, we have thousands that we need to get into, need to help. And so it's going to take, it's going to be a long haul. It's not going to happen overnight.
Seconds.
I support the efforts that the county has been focusing on. The city has to some extent as well, but mostly the county in looking at some motels. The problem is that the city wants to not just lease it short-term, we want to lease to own. This is the right thing to do. So we need to continue working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your responses. So the next question goes to you, Try. And this continues this conversation. We're trying to have citywide going towards solutions. If, if you would at all, how would you leverage city-owned land to support affordable housing? Given the choice, would you prefer to sell lands to raise dedicated funds for housing or to follow San Francisco's model of providing free ground leases for affordable housing development on public property?
I'm leaning towards leasing that land with leasing it with very low rates or free because that is a public, that's our land, and when we sell it, then we don't have access to it anymore. So we should be very wary of selling public land. On this issue of selling, making decisions in government, and we need to make sure that the people trust that those in office represent them and represent the desire of all residents, of all residents to solve the homelessness issue. And also, the decisions being made further, the mission of creating an Oakland of love and belonging for all and preserving the diversity and uniqueness of our community. In order to obtain that trust, we need to we need to do all we can to eliminate any sign of corruption. And that mean, that's why I have my $35 limit. I don't want any question about who I represent. And we have to also expand participation to hold government accountable to the needs of the people. So in
15 seconds.
In, so in that decision, whether or not to sell or lease, we need to make sure those representing people represent the people.
Thank you. I apologize. I again pronounced it Tree when it is Try. My apologies.
It's all good.
So we are back around to you, Dan, and it's the same question. What is your preference for how we would leverage city-owned land at all to support affordable housing? Would you prefer to sell the lands to raise dedicated funds or follow the model of free ground leases for affordable housing development on public property?
Thanks for that question. My preference would be, my philosophical preference would certainly be to not sell off the land to private, to private property, private ownership, even though that might bring in some money to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund if they were to build market-rate housing. We went through that for a number of years. We got some money from that. We got more market-rate housing built. I think we achieved that objective for the most part. Now, we need to have laser focus on below-market housing. And so, yes, I would prefer, strongly prefer that we, you know, keep, keep that into our, our property, work with affordable housing developers who I have worked with time and time again, I work with affordable housing operators, work with the land trust, as I have again repeatedly, and get more below-market housing built. But just, it's easy to say that, and I, and I could say that just as was anybody else, but, you know, it's taken sometimes, you know, four or five years or more for me to work with the group, those groups, and get those projects under construction. And we have somebody in my, in my district that one's under construction, one's about to be under construction. So we've had some success. It just takes a long time because no matter what process you use, it takes a while to get that money. And we are very aggressive in helping the nonprofits access state and federal grants, regional grants sometimes, to get that funds. And so we're very aggressive at helping them, and we have to make sure that our staff
15 seconds.
We have to make sure that our staff helps the nonprofits the best we can to access that money and provide the opportunities that they need and help them raise the funds. And that's the focus. It's one thing to say lease, own. It's another thing to actually help them raise the money, and that has to be our focus. We need to help them raise the money and do what we can to get that, get the funds in place.
Thank you, councilmember. And finally, Stephanie. How would you choose to leverage city-owned land, if at all? Selling the lands to raise dedicated funds or free ground leases for affordable housing development on public property?
Well, public land is for public purpose. It, that would, that's my thought. If we were to ever sell, the conditions would have to be very strong to insist that the affordable housing was there in perpetuity, but I prefer the leasing. You know, Councilmember Cal brings up the state and, you know, that, the, the affordable housing, the funding process at the state level is very cumbersome, and if there was a way to streamline that, that could take, it could shave time off on getting some of these very deeply affordable projects up and running because that's, that's what we need. I mean, our, our, our pressing crisis here is that we have so many unhoused residents, and so the sooner we can get affordable housing deeply low, straight from, you know, underneath the freeway on-ramp into a home with their head on a pillow at night and a door that locks is, is the goal. So however we speed that up, however we make that happen in the most timely fashion, I think, is in the best interest of the city of Oakland and the people who live here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your response. We're going to go in a little further on this issue, knowing the next question is for you, Councilmember Cal, that we have another wave coming. Thousands of Oakland renters have lost their incomes due to COVID, and the resulting economic crisis is leaving them unable to even pay rent. State and local bans on evictions won't last forever, and the tenant debt is rising. These households are now at risk of eviction, and it creates economic hardships for the small landowners and affordable housing providers. What policies will you support to provide stability and security for tenants and housing providers as we move out of the moratorium period?
Thank you for that question. Appreciate that. And I think you hit the nail on the head there. Yes, I'm proud to be one of the, the authors of the eviction moratorium in Oakland that we put forward, and we had to renew and expand and extend multiple times, and I have no, no hesitation in doing that and doing, and doing that again. We also need to make sure, as the county has done, and we have done as well, need to make sure that any unpaid rent that's due to the COVID crisis is not going to be grounds for eviction. The state had an opportunity to do some bold legislation, and they punted. They did some stopgap legislation. It wasn't enough. So stopgap is fine, but nothing, but they have more to do in January. They're going to take, make, make some serious choices, and I hope their choices fall on the side of protecting our renters. We cannot have mass evictions, no matter what the situation is, and so we need to do it. We can't, local level Uh, fall on the side of protecting our renters. We cannot have mass evictions, uh, no matter what the situation is, and so we need to do it with, we we can't local level. And the state level to prevent those mass evictions. I'll also say is, we also cannot, under any circumstances. Have another major foreclosure crisis that we had, uh, that came out of the last recession twelve years ago. That would be a disaster for everybody. And so if there's gonna be efforts to um, make sure people don't have to pay rent, or are not evicted, but but don't pay as much rent. There has to be some kind of concurrent effort to make sure that the the property owners.
Fifteen seconds.
At least the more, a lower and moderate income, smaller property owners are not um, getting to the point where they would have foreclosure. That would be absolutely unacceptable, and stopping and preventing another foreclosure crisis must be a top priority, city, state, and federal.
Thank you very much for your response. I appreciate it. Um, same question goes to you, Steph. What policies will you support to provide stability and security for tenants and housing providers? As we potentially move toward this next wave of evictions?
Right. Yeah, I mean, look where we are, and rent isn't even due yet. You know, that's, that's a scary um, reality. Um, that is coming right down the pipe. So uh, this is, we're gonna need state and federal support without question. You know, we can't, Oakland can't take this on, and we also can't have uh, tenants suddenly having, you know, back rent due all at once. I mean. Where is the income that that, you know what I mean? It it just, it doesn't make sense. So we're going to need the state and the feds to come in and help us out. And they're gonna have to help some of the housing providers too, um, or w- we're gonna have foreclosures, we're gonna have, you know, the, if the bank seizes. An apartment building, then everybody's out. Um, and and that would be a disaster. So yes, I absolutely support the eviction moratorium. It's critical. People have no way to pay rent, and as we've discussed earlier, housing is a human right. So um, we're gonna have to lean on uh, government at other levels to help, to help bail us out of this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, and finally, I turn this same question over to you, Try. What policies will you support to provide stability and security for tenants and housing providers as the moratoriums come to an end?
Housing is right, so we do everything we can to ensure that people are not on the streets, um, and everything I said before applies. I think, I'm gonna say something controversial here, but we need to talk to everyone in our community, tenants and landlords. And ask for their participation in this collective issue. We need all the resources we can get. Uh, we need to protect tenants from illegal eviction, make sure they're educated, provide them with the resources to fight back. But with landowners, we must disperse the, any risks that they have, um, anything that would deter them from, from providing um, housing. Every, you know, there are bad landlords, absolutely, but we all have to be part of the solution. People can't feel like they're being ignored. People can't feel like they're being demonized. Um, we need to ask banks to sacrifice um, regarding uh, mortgages that are unpaid. They have resources, and we can, we definitely need to go to them. Um, we need to increase city funds to support existing um, housing subsidies. I would. You know, temporarily freeze uh, salaries, city salaries that are a hundred tw- twenty-five K or higher, freeze headcount increases. Be cautious about proving overtime to make sure.
Fifteen seconds.
And also I would look for new sources of revenue to support housing subsidies, uh, taxing absentee uh, uh, owners and vacant property owners at. High rates so that they actually take action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, this next question goes to you, Steph, and I'm gonna push this question a little bit further. We'd all like to know from each of you specifically, how your efforts on housing can, should, and will differ from what electics. Electic, electeds have been working to do for many years. What are your specific plans?
So this is, this is uh, i- i- it's such a huge problem, and I think, you know, we didn't plan well. Um, we need to rezone. We need inclusionary zoning. Uh, exclusionary zoning has a racist past. Um, many of us here on this call wouldn't be living in some of these neighborhoods in Oakland right now. It's, we cannot uh, ignore the fact that more housing is going to help solve the issue. Um, multifamily housing, particularly near transit, is something I would push for. I think, yeah, I was talking to a previous council member who sat in this seat for sixteen years. And she said, the city council needs to push developers to meet a certain affordable housing component or no deal. And I'd like to, you know, I'd like to entertain that. Um, I think it's really easy for a developer to just pay a twenty-three thousand or twenty-five thousand dollar impact fee. And build four hundred and forty-seven units of market rate housing. Um, that most of peo- most of the people in the community cannot afford. So um, I would push for um. Tougher permitting.
Fifteen seconds.
Yeah, that, I think that's one way to do it, and and I would change the zoning. And I would also insist that, you know, vacant, vacant property is a no-go. We, not when people are sleeping on the streets. You know, let's continue pushing the, uh, let's.
Thank you.
Wants to turn their house into a duplex, that sort of stuff. We need more housing.
Thank you. We appreciate your response.
You bet.
Try, same question. How would your efforts in housing differ from what electeds have already been working toward for many years? What are your specific plans?
So my background is in engineering. I know some numbers. I went to MIT, and I have a PhD in biomedical engineering, so. I, I'm not saying I have all the answers, but I would definitely approach this in a, in a quantitative way. Housing needs to match, the distribution of housing costs needs to match distribution, distribution of income. The median income is sixty thousand in in Oakland, and I'm, I'm just gonna work to match those two curves. So that we have enough housing for all different types of people in Oakland. Things I'm going to do differently. Um, we need to, you know, people like to demonize developers, a- and I think partially because of, they don't know who government represents. There are people who care deeply about preserving community in Oakland. Um, I spoke with a small developer who helped uh, an African-American family build. Um, develop on their own land, uh, providing another source of revenue, and then enabling them to hold on to their land, preventing displacement. We need to support small developers, increasing competition against those large developers. We need to simplify regulations so that small developers don't have to hire huge, you know, law firms to get through this process. Um, we should support ADU development, which is, costs half as much as a new development. Um, I support, obviously, uh, increasing density.
Fifteen seconds.
Um, we need to expand participation in um, any, in meetings that approve projects. We, I disagree with Dan, we are not moving fast enough. We are not moving fast enough. It took twenty years to build a development near MacArthur.
Thank you.
Have twenty years.
Thank you, Try. Appreciate your response. Um, and finally, um, Dan, as a sitting council member. How will, if at all, your efforts differ from what you have been working on for many years? What are your specific plans going forward?
Thank you. I I don't think I said anywhere that we were moving fast enough, but uh, any case, that's okay. Uh, so I appreciate that the question, uh, there's a lot more actually we need to do. Uh, part of it is kind of just taking what we have been doing and increasing that to scale, which, and that, that of course takes some, some will, some more money. Uh, some more determination, and the right combination of people who wanna make it happen. We have a great housing director now, we've had other good ones in the, in the past, but a strong one right now. So I'm looking for, I've been working with her very closely. I agree on the ADUs. I've already been a strong supporter of ADUs for for a number of years now, even long before it was a thing to do in the, in the Assembly, in the Senate. Uh, I think we need to really do what we can within federal law to use the Oakland Housing Authority. And if we could get some new regulations at the federal level to allow us to have more interaction, more control of the housing authority, that would be, that would help a lot. I think it'd help a lot. I wanna bring zone two of the impact fees into zone one, that alone would bring a lot more money, some more, some more money for it to our Affordable Housing Trust Funds. Those zones were not a good idea to begin with. I fought those, but I was outvoted on that element, even though the impact fees are important. Um, I wanna work even more closely with land trusts. We have some, we have some millions of dollars in our budget already. To help with the land trust acquire new housing for limited equity ownership housing, very, very important, and we need to up that game.
Fifteen seconds.
Uh, and then it's really, it's about, you know, production, preservation, protection. I've been engaged in all these things, and we just need to kind of start. A- a- I'm, I'm an effort that's gonna quadruple the amount we're already doing. I do support inclusionary zoning, I have for a long time. I actually supported it back in two thousand and six. It didn't pass then. We could do more now.
Thank you, council member. Appreciate your response. So, we're gonna try to move on, but everything right now, at this moment we're living in, seems to be about land. So Try, this next question goes to you regarding the uh, Oakland Coliseum. The Oakland Coliseum as well is public land with fifty percent owned by the city. How do you think this land should be used? How would you ensure that the Surplus Lands Act is followed in this case? How would you involve the community in planning and implementing development there?
I got a little distracted because someone tried to call me. Um, first, I wanna apologize to um, uh, Dan, uh, because, yes. You didn't say that, um, but we need to move faster, is my point. Uh, we need to build more. Uh, regarding um, the A's cause, uh, uh, the Coliseum property. I, again, the, what I said before about um, public property applies there. First, uh, how will I negotiate on behalf of the community? First, you have to have someone that the community trusts represents them. That's why I have a thirty-five dollar limit on my campaign contributions. Uh, second, um, any action I take will be completely transparent, and I will move with the community because I understand. That when you move without the community, it has repercussions in the future. They don't trust you, and then when you wanna do something, you can't do it. So I would be extremely transparent about my negotiations regarding using that land. I prefer to lease the land. Um, again, everything I said before applies. I would, I currently, I don't believe that Howard Terminal is the easiest solution. Um, I think that we should. Use the land um, at the Coliseum property.
Ten seconds.
And. I'm, whatever decision we make, it needs to move us towards um, achieving housing for all.
Thank you. I appreciate your response. Um, Dan, the same question goes to you. Like with housing, there's an issue around public land, and Oakland Coliseum is public land with fifty percent owned by the city. How should the land be used, and how would you ensure the Surplus Lands Act is followed there? And how will you involve the community in planning and implementing development there?
Thank you for that. Uh, the Surplus Land Act is something that I feel very strongly about. In fact, there have been times, uh, not related to the Coliseum. Well, actually, related to the Coliseum, but other properties prior to that, where I, I was the one who most vocally uh, insisted that we comply with it by the spirit and letter of that law. And and urged the county to comply with that as well, when they were uh, sh- shortchanging that, that part of the, the process. So yes, uh, Surplus Land Act is absolutely crucial, and it was amended last year or recently, and so we have to make sure we comply with the updated act. Um, second, um, the Coliseum property itself, I think we all know uh, that um, about what the A's wanna do at Howard Terminal, and they may end up doing there, may not. But there's certainly a possibility, a viable possibility, that there could be a new ballpark, a new A's only, A's baseball-only ballpark at the Coliseum. If that comes to fruition, if the new ballpark will be at the Coliseum, then it does make sense to me to have the Oakland A's to be like a master developer. And master leaseholder for the entire property. However, that is contingent upon making sure the city. Gets what it feels it needs with the community's input on the overall development of that Coliseum property. Which must include a large amount of affordable housing, possibly an entertainment center, and of course, possibly a new A's ballpark. If there is no A's, and the A's do not, the A's totally leave the Coliseum, then there needs to be a community process. A competitive process in terms of who should uh, be the master leaseholder for that land, and the city needs to work with the community and making sure what, how that land is used.
Thank you.
Most urgent needs.
Thank you. I appreciate your response.
Thanks.
Um, same question goes to you, Steph, uh, regarding the Oakland Coliseum. It is public land with fifty percent owned by the city. How should it be used? How would you ensure the Surplus Lands Act is followed? And how would you involve the community in planning and implementing development there?
Right, so um, there would have to be community benefit, right, to, in order to, to adhere to the Surplus Lands Act and make sure that we follow that, of course. Um, I'm j- jotting, jotted down a few notes. Uh, so there needs to be substantial affordable housing. If if the A's leave the Coliseum and that land is sold, then there would have to be affordable housing in perpetuity in that area. Uh, the convenience of of uh, people of lower income levels having a BART stop uh, at their, you know, walking distance from their front door. We would need to make sure that there was mixed-use development included in that. We would make to, make, have to make sure that there was plenty of, of food and services to, to. Make life uh, convenient uh, for for folks who who would be living in that space. Um, I would also make certain that I commu- I communicated with the community throughout. I think oftentimes people, uh, residents feel that they're, they're shut out of processes, and I think it's critically important to find out what are your needs? What are your wants? What are your visions? And how can we make it work? I'm, I'm big on trying to work together towards a common goal. And I think that would be critical throughout the entire process of of determining what happens there. Um, affordable housing being the, at the pinnacle of of my desires, and I'm sure the.
Ten seconds.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Eight, eight to go. All right.
Yes, indeed. Um, help me remember, um, are you next in the cycle, Dan, for the first question?
I don't remember, but I'm fine starting if you want. I, I.
Okay. All right, we, we, we are kind of circulating around um, what to do with money and how to redistribute money. And so we wanna ask a question about funding and the city budget, um, because a lot of these questions are around where will you get resources, so. Local funding for affordable housing has been substantially reduced ever since the loss of redevelopment dollars in two thousand and twelve. What new sources would you pursue to create a permanent funding stream for affordable housing? As well, would you support reducing a portion of the OPD budget? And reallocating those funds for the construction and preservation of affordable housing in Oakland?
I say, what's the first part of the question again? I'm sorry.
Uh, let me stop your time.
I apologize.
No worries. Um, what new sources of funding would you pursue to create a permanent funding stream for affordable housing? Additionally, would you support reducing a portion of the OPD budget? And reallocating those funds for the construction and preservation of affordable housing in Oakland?
Thank you. Uh, construction, uh, protection, preservation of affordable housing, all, all very important. Uh, yes, and really, the, the most effective source of funding in terms of ongoing, that would be new, in terms of what we have now or don't have now. Would be bringing back some modified form of redevelopment. That's why I worked with the League of California Cities in getting them to support. Uh, multiple bills, a couple bills over the past few years, one by Senator Jim Bell, who's, who's turned out now, uh, SB seven ninety-five, which. If it wasn't for the um, the pandemic and the serious budget problems at the state level, that bill would have passed, and we could have got it signed this year. So we'll have to bring it back in the next year or two, uh, hopefully, as we come out of the recession. And really bring back something that has more focus on affordable housing compared to last, the older redevelopment, uh, but has a dedicated source of funding. I think that was at least two billion a year, uh, which is not a huge amount, but it's pretty good. Uh, and so that's an effort that has to be, we, we're not gonna solve this problem just at the local level. Uh, we need more state funding as a commitment to affordable housing. I've lobbied for bills up there that get more funding for affordable housing. We have more to do, and bringing back redevelopment will be the most effective thing, more than twenty other bills put together. That's a, that's a reality. Two, yes, um, I do support some modification and reducing OPD funding. The first chunk of.
Fifteen seconds.
The first chunk of OPD funding that will be reallocated will go to violence, violence prevention strategies. And to a civilian first responder entity to handle um, nine-one-one calls that, where you don't need sworn officers. So after those two chunks, the third chunk should absolutely be homeless and affordable housing. So the answer is yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that uh, answer. Um, Steph, same question to you. We've lost um, affordable housing dollars. Um, what new sources would you pursue to create a permanent funding stream for affordable housing? And would you support reducing a portion of the OPD budget and reallocating those funds? For the construction and preservation of affordable housing in Oakland?
Yes, yes, I would, and I do support that, and I think that's the most obvious place to go for, for funding. You know, people talk about. Uh, reallocation of funds, reimagining policing, but when we reallocate those funds, we have to give back to communities that are suffering. And that the first place that money should go is to building more affordable housing. I'm not sure what that amount is going to be, but that is absolutely. The most, I think, the best use of of the reallocation of those funds for starters. I also am a big advocate for equity and education and other stuff, but like, yes, let's put people. But like, yes, let's put people in homes and make it easier. And I also think a regional affordable housing bond would make sense. I mean, we're in crisis mode and what has, what's been happening up to now has got us to where we are right now. And, you know, three years of impact fees is going to yield about 75 affordable housing units. And so what are the other 4,925 folks who are currently unhoused do? And so I think we, we need to start thinking of new sources, like perhaps a bond and definitely a reallocation. But I also think we can smartly shrink the budget.
15 seconds.
Okay. Did I hit all, did I answer all points?
Yes, yes, you can. Thank you. We appreciate that. And finally, our last response of this panel, Try. We've lost a lot of affordable housing dollars. What streams of funding would you pursue to create a permanent funding stream for affordable housing? As well, would you support reducing a portion of the OPD budget and reallocating those funds for the construction and preservation of affordable housing in Oakland?
We need to restore trust between the community and government so that they know that their dollars are being, their tax dollars are going to the right place. Without that trust, we can't ask for more funding. And so engagement is number one, participation and transparency and creating a government that represents all, that is core. I would, it's all about thinking, how do we increase resources? More revenue. We need to tax vacant property owners heavily so that they take action. It is unacceptable to have vacant property and unhoused residents. We need to tax, you know how I know it's not working? Because I walk down the street and I still see vacant property, so we're not doing enough. I support bringing in nonprofits, supporting our network of nonprofits. That's another source of money and support. Also for-profit agencies that want to address the solution as well. We need to bring more resources to the problem. Of course, I support refocusing OPD funding so that it addresses the core issues of peace and, you know, creating peace in our communities instead of just being-
15 seconds.
And I absolutely, so we need to engage with the community. We need to put all options on the table. I also support, especially during the pandemic, budget cuts that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate all of our panelists today. Try, Dan, Stephanie, thank you for giving time and sharing with us your perspectives on how to help and create a striving and strong city. And I'm going to hand the reins back to Dolores.
Thanks, Noni.
All right. Thank you to our candidates and our moderator. I'm going to toss it over to Gloria really quickly. Let me see, Gloria, where are you? I don't see Gloria here. There you go. Okay. Go ahead.
Thanks. Sorry, I just unplugged my headset, so I hope everybody can hear me. I'll plug it back in. But I just, again, first of all, Noni, thank you for being our moderator and I know that's really tough, keeping people on task and meeting those complicated questions. And for our candidates, who I hope are still with us, oh, sorry, they dropped off already. But just really wanted to thank them for all being, all being here as well because that is not easy to answer tough questions like that in such a short period of time. So I really do want to thank Dan, Steph, and Try for coming through on that.
They're all popping over to the longfellow debate.
Okay, yeah, makes sense. All right, well, I think now we are taking, and I want to thank all the attendees who are on. It's great. We have, we've had between 20 and 30 and 40 people the whole time, so that's awesome. Stick around if you can. We're moving over to District 3. So Dolores, we're taking a short break, right?
Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break right now. Please take care of yourselves. And we are going to come back at 7:05 with our candidates for City Council District 3.
Hello, welcome back. And thank you for joining us. So I'd like to go over a couple more things since we may have some folks joining us for the second half. You can use the chat box for discussion, but if you'd like to ask questions, there is a question and answer icon on the bottom of the screen where you can submit questions and the moderator will consider them to be asked. Additionally, Kiki Poe is going to be our timer. So to our candidates in particular, please look out for her screen as she will be holding up two signs to notify you when you're at 15 seconds and then when you should stop. Yeah, great. And the candidates will have two minutes for introductions and then a minute and a half to answer each question. And if you would like to use captioning, there is the option for you to have captioning English. And there is also a captioning link that I hope can be put in the chat box now. If you click close captioning, that's how you can see the captioning. So thank you to our captioner for that very vital and important service. And with that, let's toss it over to Gloria Bruce, Executive Director of East Bay Housing Organizations, who is moderating this panel. Take it away, Gloria.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dolores. And I want to thank the whole EBHO team who's helping out tonight. Thank you all, especially to our candidates for joining us. We know how incredibly busy your schedules are during election season. So we are, we are so honored that you are taking an hour, even an hour, out of your evenings to be with us and really focus in on housing and homelessness issues. Just as a reminder to both our incumbent, the candidates and all of our attendees, EBHO is a 501(c)(3) organization, so we offer this as an educational moment for all of our members and attendees. We do not endorse candidates. We will not be taking a position after this, but this is just for you to have a chance to hear everybody. So I'm going to ask our guests, Councilmember McElhany, there you are. Great, wonderful to see you. And Carol Fife, if you can turn on your video, that'd be great. Hi, Carol. Nice to see you. Thank you both so much for being here. Seneca Scott, one of our other candidates, was going to join us and he, last minute, had something else and unfortunately couldn't come through. So we're sorry to miss them. And we did invite all of the candidates for this seat, and we're glad to have the two of you here. So the way this is going to work this evening, you've been through many, many of these. I'll ask you both to do a short opening statement. We'll give you two minutes for that. You can use that however you will. Of course, as you know, you both know our organization well, so really focusing on housing issues. We have a pretty savvy audience here. And then I will be going to both of you and giving you a set of preset questions and giving you, are we at 90 seconds to answer those, Kiki?
A minute and a half.
Right, 90 seconds. Okay. So for each, for each of our questions, you'll have 90 seconds to answer those. And Kiki will be timing you and I'll try to also give you a verbal cue without cutting you off mid-sentence because I know it's so hard because there's so much to say. So let me make sure I'm not missing anything else. But yeah, so with that, I am going to go ahead and get started with our opening statements. And I just flipped a coin in advance. And so I'm going to ask our incumbent, Councilmember McElhany. Would you like to start with a two-minute statement?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here, Director Bruce and to the family. I am delighted to have the opportunity to share with you what we've been able to accomplish over the seven years. As many of you know, I came to this work seven years ago. A reluctant candidate, not seeking with any political ambitions and not tied to any political machines. But I came deeply rooted in a love for my community and a commitment to service because that's how I was raised. And when called into service, I answered and set forth on an agenda that was established by the community through many, many, many living rooms. And we set out to say that we could make it better. We could do better about an economy that would work for all, focusing in on jobs, lifting that up and entrepreneurial opportunities for everyone. We talked about being an economy that would be in service. And so bringing in grocery and fresh food and the access in places that have been previously a food desert. We talked about holistic community service because what I found in District 3 was a community that felt overpoliced and under-resourced and underserved by the police. And so we went out and we began to look at how we have a more holistic way of dealing with the crime and violence that is still far too prevalent, not only in District 3 but across the flatlands. We wanted to lift up opportunities for education for adults and for children and strengthen our partnership with the school district. And then last, we really wanted to deal with the quality of life issues as it relates to environmental concerns, the air we breathe, the soil and the water. And that's the work that I've been done and I'm happy to talk about my record tonight and the vision for the future.
Perfect timing. You've clearly done this before. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Carol, would you like to give us your opening statement? Carol, I can't hear you. Are you unmuted on your phone?
Can you hear me now?
You're good.
Okay, awesome. So my name is Carol Fife. I am the Director for the Oakland Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, also known as ACE, and a longtime partner of EBHO. Our membership base is very similar and I'm proud to say that I have led, based on the voices of our membership. We are a grassroots, community-led organization that puts the needs of the most marginalized first, and that is the policy that we advocate for. And it's a part of why we engage in direct actions because so often our voices go unheard by the people in positions of power who have the ability to make our lives so much easier. So in 2020, I'm running because I'm answering the call of hundreds of Oakland residents from District 3 as well as all over the city who are crying out for change. Before COVID-19, there was already a housing crisis. We've worked together on things like Prop 10 and repealing Costa-Hawkins and closing the loopholes on duplex and triplex buildings, as well as the condo conversion ordinance. So all of the things that we're fighting for in order to make housing a human right is now commonplace where people are asking for and demanding that we see a transformation. So I'm rising to the call that I've been voluntold to do and I look forward to do that with the integrity, the honesty and transparency of a new kind of leadership in the city of Oakland so we can achieve what we all deserve, which is housing for all.
Thank you so much. Thanks both of you so much. All right, so what we're going to do now is I'm going to run through a set of questions that were submitted in advance with input from our EBHO members and from our staff, so focusing pretty deeply on some housing issues. And I will ask a question, I'm going to alternate between the two of you with who starts. So Carol, since you went second with opening, I'm going to start with you first on our first question. Dolores will also be posting the question text in the chat. So for everybody's reference, just to be able to see it visually as well. And again, just a reminder to our attendees, I think because we have just two candidates, we may have, we may have time to get to a couple of audience submitted questions. Please put those in the Q&amp;A box and I can track them over there. So let me give you our first question. So one of EBHO's mottos is that housing is a human right. Everybody needs a place to call home, but for too many people, the private market is failing to meet that need. Do you believe that housing is a human right? But most importantly, what does that mean to you, especially in Oakland? Carol, starting with you, 90 seconds.
I appreciate that question and we believe that housing is a human right, that everyone, no matter what your income, no matter what your ability, no matter what you're standing in the world, you deserve access to safe, habitable shelter where you can actually thrive. Right now, that doesn't exist because housing is commodified. We see it as a product to be sold to the highest bidder. That, to me, is unconscionable. It is evil. The fact that we have market-driven housing is a problem and I want to not only reimagine, but re-engineer our entire processes about how we address housing in the city of Oakland, in the state of California, in the United States and in the world. Moms for Housing was a great example about that, of making housing accessible to everyone and not have the corporate speculators coming in our neighborhoods and gentrifying by flipping houses and putting it out of the reach of most working-class people in our, in our city, not just working-class people, but poor people, low-income people. So I wanted to make housing as a human right more than a slogan and make it a reality, which is why I'm working on statewide legislation through ACA-10 to make that a reality for all Californians.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you for the question, Gloria.
Go ahead. Would you like me to repeat it? Are you good?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay.
I mean, I absolutely believe that housing is a human right and I've been called into this work of housing all of my adult life and working not only within the constraints of the capital marketplace, but to modify it, starting with, you know, changing how we had access to mortgages, looking at homeownership as part of the civil rights movement, giving people the opportunity to own their home and build equity to pass it on for generational wealth, advocating for and needing affordable, by affordable meaning subsidized housing for our poorest families and pushing the margin with respect that we do that. But most specifically, as I came into the work in Oakland, looking at-
looking at what we needed to do to shore up our markets that had been ravaged, where redlining was replaced by subprime mortgages, you know, leading in the country around putting together products, advocating at the federal and the state level so that we would have workout solutions for our families. And then as I came into office, being able to, you know, push forward tenant protections. I wrote the first moratorium on rent increases, working with advocate groups and my colleagues to make sure that we, we put forward financing so that we could expand the amount of monies that were available in the Affordable Housing Trust. And not only that, against even some of the nonprofit advocacy groups, making sure that we set aside monies for the, for the homeless community to make sure that we have resources specifically for homelessness housing. Now, we do need to change and transform how we do that in the country, but what we're able to do here is to make sure that we are providing as much as we can for as many as can as quickly as we can.
Sorry.
I took back those 15 seconds. See, I needed them. I knew I needed them.
Well, I was getting off mute. I tried to stay off mute. Now that my children are not having a bath and literally running behind me, there's like wet, wet children. They were running behind me a few minutes ago, but they're gone.
We want, we want to see the children.
They don't want to be seen though. Okay. I know. It's like, everybody's like, oh, I love seeing your kids. I'm like, it's really distracting for me. We need them away. All right. So the next question, this is about housing for extremely low-income people. So for people with extremely low incomes, including people who are unhoused and those on fixed incomes, sometimes even the rents in affordable housing financed by the city and tax credits can sometimes be out of reach. Now, we all know our nonprofit developers do create homeless housing, but it's, but sometimes there is still a gap. So what would you do to provide and facilitate housing that's affordable to those with little or no income? And I'm starting with Councilmember McElhany here.
Thank you. This has been one of the biggest conundrums, I think, for this season. But what we're beginning to see across the state is the ability to do statewide bonds so that we can begin to access it. My people come from the South. I tell people all the time, I'm a child of Southern migrants. And so this California experiment has really been about how do we, we lift up some of those things. And my folks live still to this day in trailers. And so as we look for housing solutions that are affordable and I know they're not tiny homes. They don't seem innovative. But being able to put people into decent, low-cost housing, like trailer communities, I think is going to be an important one that we're expanding. And I'm happy to have been appointed to the regional, the first regional committee through ABAG on housing so that we can begin to explore solutions like these on the regional level. I think too often the cities have been trying to handle it city by city. And what we see is we have a regional housing economy. And in this mega-region, we have to solve it together. And finally, there is a political will to do so that I think has just recently emerged in the last few years and has certainly strengthened in light of, in light of COVID. So statewide bond around financing, better use of philanthropy and looking at those dollars. I think we have to continually revamp this notion of tax credits. And on the federal level, we really need to fully fund, that's upside down Kiki, but we need to really fully fund the National Housing Trust and then to make sure that HUD's funding is restored to the levels that we were in the seventies in terms of keeping pace with the need.
Thank you.
I liked it upside down.
You don't get extra time with it upside down though, unfortunately. All right, Carol, over to you. Housing for people with extremely low incomes.
Well, I don't see Kiki. Why don't I get to see Kiki?
You can't see Kiki with the timer?
No, that's okay.
I'm, I'll try to also time and give you cue. She's got signs that she's holding up.
No worries. I think I have an old version of Zoom, but that's okay because I'll, I'll just say what I say and you can cut me off if necessary. But I think it's, it's important to, especially when we're talking to residents of affordable housing units and your members, my members, that it's important to set the record straight. And I'm concerned about some of the, some of the facts that have been given in a lot of these forums. And I think it's important for the viewers to be clear that there are not many housing advocates on the city council right now. Everyone is not a supportive and advocate for low-income housing or for tenants. And that's just the reality, which is why I've, I've been endorsed by housing organizations like my own, of course, that goes without saying, but also the Oakland Tenants Union and other organizations that we work with on a daily basis to get rights for the poorest residents of Oakland. And I'm going to have to do some fact-checking and publicize the reality because some of the statements that are being made by the incumbent are a little off, off-course and a little askew.
You have just under 30 seconds Carol.
That said, I think we need to do more at the local level. While there are things that should be happening at the, at the federal and statewide levels and even regional, there are things that we can do, like inclusionary zoning, that, that mandate that developers actually, especially in these private developments, set aside a certain number of units for low-income and no-income people that get supported by the Alameda County Board of Supervisors and funding that the county has that the city doesn't have access to.
Thank you. I know these are a lot to answer in 90 seconds. All right. So I'm going to move into other, as you know, we work on land use issues as well as very specific housing policies. And we've been working hard, as you both know, on public lands for a number of years. So we would like to ask you both, how would you leverage city-owned land to support affordable housing? Given the choice, would you prefer to sell lands to raise dedicated funds for affordable housing? Or to follow a model such as providing free ground leases for affordable housing development on public property? So I'm going to start with Carol on that one. What would be your approach to public land and affordable housing?
It's another one of the organizations that we facilitate in conjunction with EBHO and ACE is the Public Lands Group, which has several community organizations and other, and other organizations that are really concerned. I think we should do long-term leases. I don't think we should sell public land. This particular issue has been held up in, in the city for far too long. And we are, we are losing access. I think we need to do long-term leases. I think we should do free leases for the development of affordable housing for folks. And I think there are other things that we can do too. For instance, the Permanent Affordability Fund that we were able to acquire $12 million as a set aside for the path to acquire and rehabilitate housing. We need to recapitalize that so we can have more funding available so that these developments and these types of developments can be made on public lands so we can develop there at, at lower rates than what we're getting for this $500,000 per unit to build. I think there are numerous ways, many of which we've been in conversation about over the years for how to actually access. Just knowing how much is in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would be helpful. And so when we have these impact fee conversations, instead of nickeling and diming and trying to get lower impact fees, we should be pushing our private developers to do more in terms of investment. And then we should pressure the city to let us know how much money is actually in those funds.
Thank you. All right. Toss me it over.
You can re, re, repeat the question.
Yes, it's also, it's also posted here in the, in the chat for your reference as well. So how would you leverage city-owned land to support affordable housing? Given the choice, would you prefer to sell lands to raise dedicated funds for housing or follow San Francisco's model of, for example, providing free ground leases for affordable housing development?
Thank you for the question. I was very pleased that in my first term, I was able to co-opt the city's lease versus sale policy together with City Attorney Barbara Parker. My preference is to lease. There are some occasions, however, when we have found the ability to sell loose parcels that aren't suitable for development and led on the effort to dedicate those funds to our Affordable Housing Trust. And recently, one of those things came up with this little excess parcel next to someone's home that we were able to sell. And I made sure that those funds were dedicated to the Affordable Housing Trust. The thing about being able to expand though, what we're doing within our, within our public lands has been somewhat of a tension. And I think it's not yet resolved even among the community as we continue to debate. Is it better to use inclusionary, which means units get built, but fewer units are made? Or do we move forward with trying to have 100% units and we leverage those funds differently? We've been able to do it in both ways. There was a big fight, for example, for Mid-Pins Project, what became Mid-Pins Project as part of Brooklyn Basin. And I stood very firm that I felt like low-income families needed to have access to the waterfront, though there were many, many people who wanted to see us sell that parcel and use that money inside the trust. But a couple of things that we look at in terms of wanting healthy communities is to build mixed-income communities and give low-income people access to the friendships and the leveraging of middle, middle-income and affluent neighbors. So I think there's both of those.
All right. Thank you so much. So then I'm going to drill down a little bit more on a public land, a publicly-owned land issue that is within your district and ask about Howard Terminal, very easy, non-complicated situation at all. So the Oakland A's are moving a process forward to develop a new stadium at Howard Terminal. Some welcome this addition to East Oakland, while others have named that moving the stadium would take jobs and economic benefits away from East Oakland, which, from East Oakland, which desperately needs it, and many, many other issues. What is your position on the new stadium proposal? And I am starting with Lynette.
Thank you. Well, since it's in the district and it is currently under consideration, my job right now is to look at the facts as they come before us. The decision to move forward on Howard Terminal was not a city council decision. That is on Portland and the Port Commissioners voted unanimously to move that forward in the exploration. So now in my role as the leader for the district is to make sure a few things happen. One, that there's robust community engagement and we've done that with the CVA process and making sure that the city hired culturally-specific facilitators to help with that process and to move it along. And those tables are robust and they are representative of our community and not only District Three residents, which we fought for to make sure that they're at the table, but also many of our nonprofit and advocacy groups who are also in the room and we make sure that they would be in the room. As it relates to the sale of the Coliseum land, which is clearly under the city's jurisdiction, I have said, one, that it needed to go through the Subplus Lands Act, which it did. The Lands Act notices went out that we didn't move forward without it. And secondarily, that I still believe that people need to bid on it. I do not, I did not appreciate the county getting ahead of the city and moving, not in conjunction with us. The city spent nearly $4 million on a Coliseum area-specific plan. We had robust community engagement from stakeholders and residents. And I believe that the work of the Coliseum area-specific plan must be honored. And what that means is to make sure that we are implementing all of that, including the robust community benefits that are underway and the advocacy groups that we've insisted and amendments that I put forward are a part of any of the negotiations.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, Carol, over to you on Howard Terminal.
I will try not to equivocate and say that I have personal experience with people who have lost their homes and lost their rentals in East Oakland when Floyd Keppard had the ENA to develop at the Coliseum. And I believe that when development happens, poor people, black people, people of color tend to lose, no matter what happens. And I don't believe that there is a win-win for poor and working-class people in the city of Oakland at either site. So what I'm, I, I want to commit to is that people do not lose their jobs. There are over 9,000 jobs at risk at the Coliseum. And I do not believe that this is about a stadium. I believe that is about billionaires owning the majority of the land in the city. It's the growth coalition theory and I urge people to research it. I think that we need to bring the type of jobs and, or keep the jobs in East Oakland. But I also do not want to, to lose a project. But I have got to say, it is not about a ballpark. This is about public land and who owns it. I believe that public land should be owned by the public for public good and not the, the druthers of billionaires. And that, that's where I stand. So I think we need to expedite pushing through the public lands policy so that we can make it the law of the land and make sure that our residents stay housed in the city of Oakland and not get pushed out to other outline areas.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I have to tell you how terribly uncomfortable it is for me to interrupt both of you wonderful women. But I'm like, you, you both know me. It's all good. You know, this is, it's, it's not personal. It's professional. You're used to it. Sorry. All right, moderator's job. Okay, so I'm gonna, we have about three more questions, but I do want to remind our participants that if you want to put something burning in the Q and A tab, go ahead and do that. I'll keep an eye on that as well. I am not used to EBHO people being shy. But I'm going to go ahead with our pre-submitted questions. So this next one is about the current COVID crisis and evictions. And, you know, I, I also just want to put this in the context of something I know is near and dear to both of you, which is the disparate impact of everything that we're talking about on black communities, on brown communities, et cetera. So I, and that's always, that's very near and dear to EBHO's heart. So I want to put that in this, that in this context. So thousands of Oakland renters have lost, have lost their incomes due to COVID and the resulting economic crisis leaving them unable to pay rent. State and local bans on eviction won't last forever. Tenant debt is rising. This, this puts these households at risk of eviction and it creates economic hardship for small owners and affordable housing providers. What policies will you support to provide stability, security for tenants and mission-driven housing providers? And I am starting with Carol on this one.
We will continue to do the work that we've been doing for years. In the foreclosure crisis, we have a department that's currently housed in the city of Oakland because we fought for the Homeowners Bill of Rights to protect people who had lost their homes in the financial crisis and became renters at that time. And since then, my organization, along with organizations like EBHO and others, have been fighting to protect renters, particularly low-income renters. And I don't feel that you have to do that on the backs of the black middle class. I don't think, I'm sorry, on the, on the backs of the poor. I don't think you have to support homeowners by tearing down poor people and poor people who are renters. So I will, I will continue to fight to strengthen renter protections in the city of Oakland, like I've done for many, many years. I will also work to repeal Costa Hawkins. I think that's one of the primary issues that we have in the state of California. And hopefully this year, with the propositions that are in front of us, we'll be able to start chipping away at that more so that we have more of the housing stock, the existing housing stock that's available to low-income and poor people in the city of Oakland. So passing legislation and when, when, when that doesn't work and when we have to fight city council members to pass a legislation that we actually need to protect people, continue to engage in direct action so that our voices are heard.
Thank you. Lynette?
So one of the things that it's been really important for us to do, and I appreciate the nuance now in this question Gloria, because for many, many years, we had not been considering what, what it meant for low, low, low wealth, low-income owners in this community and that pressure to, to further expedite the removal of, of black ownership. And Oakland was such an important part of the American story because black people could own here and, and own a piece of the American dream. So the moratoriums have been really important. And then there are many of us that are now in the discussion about a national jubilee or a national reset on mortgages and debt. And I know it's extraordinarily complicated, but some of that has begun to be discussed, particularly with Treasury. And I think it will be helpful if we, when we change the administration to begin to have those conversations. Now, we know what the implosion of the market is because we learned that in the last market, so many people lost that didn't need to lose. So we, we now have learnings from 10 years ago that we have to lift up now around the mortgage resets. And I think we have to move to mandating them. There's some interesting models that are happening in Europe around this jubilee and a full debt reset that I think the United States needs to take a look at. And I know the governor is looking at some of those models as well. The trickier part is going to be the private financing. And what I believe we need to do is to expand sort of an FHA now coming out of COVID that would be able to buy those mortgages from private financiers so that we don't have to have mass evictions.
Thank you so much. Carol, over to you on, oh, I'm sorry. I got, I got mixed up there for just a second on my little list. All right, we're going to move to our next, our next question. Okay, so our next question, again, really easy softball, the city budget. Local funding for affordable housing has been substantially reduced ever since the loss of redevelopment in 2012. We're now seeing public budgets even more constrained. So what new sources would you pursue to create a permanent funding stream for affordable housing solutions? Would you support reducing a portion of the Oakland Police Department budget and reallocating those funds for the construction and preservation of affordable housing in Oakland?
Not only would I support it moving forward, for the past several years, we've brought it to city for the past several years, we've brought it to city council for years. EPO is a part of the Coalition, Refund Oakland Community and Labor Coalition, where we address the city budget every single, every two years. And we've brought this for at least the last three budget cycles, demanding an audit of the police overtime in order to reduce their budget. And as recently as this budget cycle, in the mid-cycle, and proposed with Nikki Bass to reduce funding. So we could have additional resources for things like affordable housing and just our general purpose fund, you know, in, in, in general. So it's something that I've advocated for. It's something that a Belgien fought against and changed the rules of the council in order to not pass. It's something that this council, the city council this year, had to use the mayor to break a tie in order to not pass. So yes, defunding has been a, a goal of mine for, for many years and a goal of the Refund Oakland Community and Labor Coalition. So I'm, I'm happy now that all of the city council members are now starting to reimagine public safety. But it's something that the community has been asking for, for a long, long time. Because in our prophetic activism, we've been way ahead of the curve. And, and now it's becoming public, publicly acceptable to start to listen to us for the, the messages that we've been saying for a long, long time.
Thank you so much. All right, council member.
Thank you, Gloria. I, I've had enough experience now with this, with the budget and some of the constraints that we have while improving our credit rating over the last four budget cycles. So I'm really, really excited about Proposition 15, and everybody who's out there needs to understand how important it is that we beat back this regressionist tactic that really led to cities, particularly urban communities, being cash-strapped. So first and foremost, to bring back 50, 60 million dollars of our money from the state is super, super important. I have made the restoration of redevelopment a top priority for my legislative. Each of us get a lobbying priorities that we get to put forward. So we are, we have our lobbyists constantly working and finding partners for the restoration of redevelopment. And I believe the way in the configuration of the assembly is now that we're going to be able to do some of that, particularly as we need to think about it. Now, in terms of recapturing money from OPD, it is absolutely something that I'm so excited about and happy that a broader part of our community beyond just the advocates are now ready to do this. Because we can't get ahead, too far ahead of the voters without having blowback. So where we are right now at this critical moment in time, as we've established the task force, we're beginning to examine it, and we have to have honest budgets. I began this, this year with saying that we had to tell the truth about our budgets, which we hadn't been. So OPD looks like it's going over its overtime budget simply because we've had tricks with not saying what the true cost of our public safety is. And now, once we know it, we can redefine it, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to move into another, another question about houseless people. I'll actually have two more on that, taking one from the Q and A. Just a reminder to our attendees, just so that I can keep track, if you have a questions, please put that in the Q and A box rather than in the chat. And don't forget, take note of who you're chatting to if you post something in the chat. Because there's, there's, you know, all panelists and all panelists and attendees suggest take note of that, please. All right, our next question, and Lynette, you'll be starting us here. What steps, oh, and I should note, this question came to us from St. Mary's Center, which is, which also partnered on putting together tonight's event. What steps should the city of Oakland take to move from criminalizing homelessness to focusing on housing solutions for unhoused people? And now, I'll leave the part two, I'll make that a separate question. I won't make it too complicated. All right, so what steps should we take to move from criminalizing homelessness to focusing on housing solutions?
So I, I think we've done a lot to, to decriminalize or to not criminalize homelessness to the point where I think many of our housed community and businesses are becoming a little bit fatigued. Because we've not made a priority of shifting and moving, and I was the first on the council to stop with the breakup of encampments and start thinking about services in place. How do you reconfigure a camp into something that is structured and organized and enter into a social contract with the houseless residents that are my constituents? And we did that with the compassionate communities model. And it started with deep community engagement with both the unhoused and the housed. As the administration lifted up those learnings, they moved into the cabin communities and kind of left out the community engagement from the council offices, moving autonomously through the administration. But we need to continue to do that work. There are other things that Oakland has led on in terms of not dealing with sit-ly or those kinds of things that have been known in other communities. So our community is deeply compassionate. On the housing solution side, we are beginning now, particularly with COVID, to move more expeditiously. It is now the state paying attention to where we are. So we just finished acquiring two hotels and the dormitories. We're putting forth, I was the first to put forward the purchase of more transitional housing. We saved the Henry Robinson by lobbying with Barbara Lee so that
Ten seconds.
And then we were able to increase and expand Section Eight vouchers, which I think has got to be critically a part of this. We're continuing to lobby to make sure that Section Eight can be used for bedrooms and not just full housing units.
Thank you so much. Carol, over to you.
I look forward to having a stronger relationship with the county. And I've, I'm pleased to have the endorsement of the president of the Alameda County Board of Supervisors so that we can be in deeper partnership about the county doing more in, in relationship with the city of Oakland to address our homelessness crisis. I think it's important to listen to the voices of those that are most marginalized because I know there are people living on the streets right now, many of which we've worked to house in, in hotels because the city and the county and the state are not moving fast enough. So when we get urgent calls, we take it upon ourselves to make sure that people have access to emergency housing. So what I would like to see is that the voices of the individuals who are closest to the pain give the answers about what is actually needed, and then elected officials follow their lead to make it happen. There are people that have been killed in these cabin communities because there's not enough safety, there are not enough precautions to make sure that people are okay. There are not ways that people can actually use the restrooms in a, in a dignified manner or have access to, to plumbing or heating. And so we need to create systems and, and structures that house people in ways that they are, are actually seen as, as full human beings. There are vacant properties that can be used in rehab and, and utilized for affordable housing or no-cost housing if there was a political will.
Thank you. I, I know this issue is, is very near and dear to both of your hearts. And luckily, the next question, which was submitted through Facebook Live, lets you talk about this a little bit more. I just want to know for everybody, we have our attendees here. We also have people who are streaming and watching and submitting comments on Facebook Live. So I have the following question, again, continuing on the theme of houselessness and picking up on some of what you both said. How would you house homeless people right now in the time of COVID wildfires, bad air, even if it's not long-term? Carol, starting with you.
I've, I've been in conversation with individuals from the HOG, individuals at the, at the county level and the statewide level around just acquiring some of the vacant properties that exist or vacant land that exists. So we can immediately put trailers that have bathrooms inside of them, places where people can shower, and, and utilizing that land for immediate housing of unsheltered people. Some of our hotels that are under leased or underutilized right now, we can, we can put people in. We deeply need wraparound services so that people can get substance abuse care if it's needed. They can bring their belongings in if they want, and so that they can come and go as they please. But we need the supports from all levels of our government to make sure that those are safe spaces, not only for the residents, the potential residents, but also the community at large. We can do it because the spaces exist. But once again, just like we had to do with Moms for Housing, because we were, voices were going unheard, we had to take a property to bring attention to the fact that there are four vacant units for every one unsheltered person living on Oakland streets. So if we could have the courage to say, we're going to change things because we're living in a pandemic and act with the fierce urgency of now, we could, we could house everyone that's living on the streets. We just would have to make it a political priority because it is currently a priority to the people living on the streets and the people that are currently living in our communities.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to go back to a question from our partner, St. Mary's Center. This is our last pre-submitted question, and then I'm going to try to get one more in.
I don't think I answered that question, Gloria.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So sorry about that. I'm like, I have like five windows open. I'm tracking. My apologies, Lynette. Please go ahead.
I started to think, well, did I answer that?
No, I know. Please go ahead, Lynette. My apologies.
Thank you. I've been working since 2013 to get the city and the county to adopt these KOA-type campgrounds. And I think we finally have the legal rubrics, like you're nodding because you know I've been ethos, like ethos dius, to make sure that we get to sort of a KOA campground that would be supported. I believe that we really should move with the fierce urgency of now. I never argued this since 2014 when we, before we got to the compassionate communities in terms of alignment. I believe that if we treated this like this was an earthquake, we would have FEMA camp-type setups immediately where we commandeered the land. We did that, you know, we, we've done it in, in, in natural disasters, and we should do it now. We should do it with a standardized tent. We should do it with heat. We should make sure that there's plumbing. We can begin from there to do the trailers and to expand out. I think we have to do it in a more cost-effective way than waiting on units or hotels and those kinds of things. And we need to do it in partnership with the unhoused, many of whom who have some income. Currently, when we're planning these communities, we do it at zero participation from them. And so our dollars don't stretch as much as they should. But I'm really hopeful that the new administrator, Ed Riskin and his team with Jason Mitchell, Natanda Simmons, and Dariel Dunston are hearing this now and feel a different kind of political will. And we hope to be bringing this forward in the next couple of weeks. And I believe that we will have a unanimity of the council to begin to move into these spaces and use not only public land, but private land that has been made available to us. We've all been out there working so hard at it, and now it's the opportunity for us to seize it.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to go to that question from St. Mary's Center on related issue. Because we know it's all interconnected, even though we're focusing on, on housing, a question about hunger. Hunger is, hunger and other forms of poverty are increasing, but many philanthropic efforts are poorly coordinated and disconnected from sustainable change. How can we feed hungry neighbors and put food on their table for the long run?
This is so near and dear to my heart, and it's, this goes back to making sure that we are really having honest conversation and honest budgets. And I believe that we, we definitely need a new administration at the federal level. At the state level, the governor is beginning to see, and I think COVID has laid bare just how hungry people were. When I took office, one in five children in my district went to bed hungry. That number has now slipped to one in four. It's the reason why I serve on the ACO cap board, where we deal with the issues of hunger, why we support President Womachan's all-in effort to deal with the subsidies that are needed. We're starting to look, and, and not only for young people, you know, within eight days of the pandemic going into effect, we set up the D3 Cares Team where we've been feeding West Oakland seniors early in the pandemic. We're now at 1,500 meals privately financed that we've been putting on the ground in, in partnership with West Oakland community groups. So though, we, we've got to expand how we're looking at hunger. The state has to take this on. I believe we need a more righteous tax structure at the state level so that we can stop dealing with it. I know that Prop 15 again is not a cure-all, but I'm looking forward to that 50 to 60 million dollars a year coming back to the city so that we can prioritize housing and hunger within, within the constraints of what we can do while leveraging both our federal and statewide partners. It's critical. It's absolutely necessary.
Thank you so much. Carol, on hunger.
We need radical systems change. Under capitalism, we will always have poverty that leads to hunger and so many other illnesses in our community. So while we're waiting, and while we're not even waiting, while we're actually pushing and activating our communities around this change that is so necessary that so many people across the country are advocating for, a shift from corporate subsidies that, that lifts up the wealthy and, and grow income inequality, we have to provide for ourselves. In the city of the Black Panthers, the birthplace of the Black Panthers, this, the, our government's made a change when the community starts feeding itself. And we have so many community organizations that are out there right now feeding hungry people. So those are the community, the organizations that need to be resourced. Because I'm telling you, when radical organizations start taking on the role of the government, then is when the government pays attention, like, okay, we need to do something more about these, the conditions of our residents because we can't have people who want to shift the narrative and shift the reality of people being left to folks who want to actually change our governance structure as well. So I think it's important to resource the organizations that are currently on the ground, making sure that our homeless and unsheltered siblings are fed. And we need to get them stabilized into accessible housing so that they can even refrigerate and, and serve and cook the food that we're bringing to them.
Thank you so much. All right, that, that concludes the questions that we had ready for you in advance. I'm going to take one from the audience, from an anonymous attendee. I wish I knew who this was, but it's a pretty general question. So what are the candidates' plans to serve the entire district, which includes homeowners and small rental building owners who pay property taxes to support the city? And I'll just restate that. Supporting everyone, including homeowners and small rental building owners. And I'm starting with Carol on this one.
Once again, I don't believe that we have to put these populations against each other. I think in District Three, people love each other. People want to see solutions to the issues that are, are prominent in the district. Homelessness and housing affordability being primary issues. And I think we can serve everyone when we make sure the needs of the most marginalized are addressed. And we can do that through some of the things that I've been advancing in the city for, for quite some time now. I think helping to redirect funds from the Oakland Police Department will give us more revenue. The gross receipts tax will help give us more revenue to adequately do that. And just a, a fair look at our housing landscape will, will allow us to do that as well. Making sure that people have safe places to thrive and live is a key component of making sure that everyone is, is okay. So while I do believe that Prop 15 is important, schools and communities first, there are things that we can do at the local level to make sure the residents of the district are taken care of. And once again, housing is central to that. I, I got a little better. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, Lynette.
I, I really appreciate this question because we in Oakland say we value diversity until the diversity sounds like conflict and we don't want to sit in it. I have led from the place of usually staking out the margins just to make sure that we don't have group thinking, that we are not overlooking or overshadowing a critical component of our community. So when six council members are on one side of an issue, I tend to tease out what is a minority position. And in that way, sometimes I've made people feel like I'm not listening to the majority. But it's so important if we value diversity that we first listen. I've often lifted up this notion of being bold, courageous, and humble. It takes boldness to come forward with big ideas that shift systems that challenge the status quo. It takes courage to stake out the minority position because you're surely in this town going to take a lot of punches and false allegations about what the intent is. We do ourselves a disservice with describing intent rather than listening to the full intention of the thing. And then we have to be humble enough to know that all we get is a good idea, that our perspective is not the full perspective. So I listen to our homeowners. I listen to every sector. I try to bring everybody together. And I don't think about it in terms of compromise, but how do we harmonize so that we get to the place where we have collective wisdom? And in that way, we have these budgets that are harmonized. I was the first council member to look for an A.O. budget and that really wanted to lift up this notion of collective wisdom, and that's how we do it, and that's how I've been doing it.
Thank you so much. All right, well, we're getting close to our closing time. I want to give each of you one minute, just for any closing statement you want to share tonight. I will start with Carol, and then I'll move to Dolores. Once both Carol and Lynette have spoken, I'll move Dolores to close us out. I do want to remind everybody, thank you for those of you who have posted questions for us. We are, we are only asking questions that apply to both candidates to maintain our role as an educational forum. So that's, that's what we've done tonight. So we are going to move now to our closing statements. Carol, since Lynette started first in the beginning, you may start now. One minute.
Oh, one minute. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, well, I just appreciate being able to be here. And I think it's important to state for the record that the reason that I've talked about our relationship between ACE and EPO is because is because we represent the same base. We're fighting for the very same people. That's it, that's all. And unfortunately, in the system that we live in today, so many of our base has been ignored, has been devalued and has been left on the sidelines to figure out how are we going to survive? I have prioritized disabled people in my campaign. I prioritize black and brown folks and people of color in my campaign and for low income and working class people because those are the folks who are are going without. And specifically in a time of COVID, where where people need more assistance more than ever, it's important that we listen to the marginalized and build and create for them. Because without the people who hold up our city, we are at a loss. And so I'm asking for the support of people who understand that and can do their own research to find out what is accurate in this time of the day.
Thank you so much. Councilmember McElhaney.
I want to thank you all for being a part of this forum tonight. And I, it's been an absolute honor and privilege, the high mark of my life, besides having my baby, to be in service to my community. For the last eight years, I have worked diligently to deal with the marginalized and to you know, move forward in our town, a collective where we can be one Oakland. And we've gotten so much further. But because injustice isn't eradicated in two years or four years in a cycle doesn't mean that people aren't working diligently to get there. You can check out my record because I bring the receipts at www.lynetteforoakland.com. We are here in this place because Oakland is worth fighting for. I've lived in the indicators. I'm a black woman that lives in police terror and that I've known homelessness and poverty and hunger. And I'm yet rooted in love, grounded in hope, committed in to serve and fighting for justice. That is the reason why I urge everyone to learn about this campaign, to step into this with love and courage and to join me as we continue the work that we've been doing over the last seven years.
Thank you.
Getting it better.
Thank you both so very much. We know all the demands on your time, so appreciate you being here this evening. We are just at our close. Dolores, I don't know if you want to mention our upcoming events or?
Yes, I am here.
All right.
Thank you so much um to both of our candidates, um Carol Fife and incumbent Lynette Gibson-McElhaney. Thank you to Gloria for moderating. Um, thank you to all our attendees, um, our cosponsors, special shout out to them, Black Cultural Zone and St. Mary's Center. I want to again um invite everyone to check out our website for information on more upcoming events. Tomorrow, there is an event um talking about Measure Z in Alameda County, um, which is super racially complex. Please, if you're in Alameda or in Alameda City, excuse me, please, um, check that out. We also have a panel um candidates forum next week for districts uh five, seven and the at large seats, which we encourage you to definitely come to, especially for at large, because you will have a chance to vote for that as well. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us. Uh, this video should be available shortly if you want to look back or send it out to folks. And and I also want to give a heads up that we are sending candidate questionnaires to our candidates to get even more in depth in written format. And that will be available um the first week of October for everyone to look at. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you so very much.